Good evening. We call the very first meeting of the year 2021, the School Board of St. Lucie County, to order and welcome all of you in attendance with us tonight, whether you're in our audience or joining us via another means, a virtual means, which seems to be our world these days. But it's good to see all of you and know that you're out there. If you would, please, stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our Treasure Hunter pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. Just so the record will reflect accurately, all five board members are in attendance tonight. Mr. Ingersoll is just joining us via the virtual world, so welcome, Mr. Ingersoll. We're glad you're joining us tonight and hope all is well with you. We will now proceed to the public hearing for the proposed adoption of amendments to School Board Policy Number 6.145. Are there any in attendance tonight that wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the Board adopt the proposed amendments to Policy Number 6.145 as submitted.
Thank you. We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, a second. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any further conversation? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 5-0. We're going a little bit out of our motion tonight and going to our special thanks and recognitions at this point, and then we will do our special orders of business. So, Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it over to you for the star presentation.
Okay. All right, I'll turn it over to Ms. Martin for our star presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we can continue on with the special orders of business and special recognitions, the first item that we have tonight is something that's very near and dear to your heart, the Big Brothers Big Sisters Bowl for Kids' Sake winners. And I know that just prior to winter break, you had the opportunity to visit these schools. This was a little bit different than we've done in the past. Normally, we have a great day on a Saturday raising funds at the bowling alley, but this year it was done virtually, and I'm very pleased that our schools were still able to participate. So, in first place this year, we had Morningside Elementary, and second place, we had Savannah Ridge Elementary, and in third place, Fairlon Elementary. So, congratulations to the schools and the benefactor, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, with the money that was raised. The next item is recognition of Port St. Lucie High School, who was recently awarded a School of Excellence Award. The School of Excellence Award was launched this year by the American College Application Campaign, and it recognizes schools across the country that are helping students achieve their post-secondary goals. Port St. Lucie High School was nominated, serving as an exemplary model for the Apply Yourself Florida Initiative last year and their partnership with Indian River State College. The goal of ACA and Apply Yourself Florida is increase the number of first-generation students and students from low-income families who pursue a post-secondary education by assisting high school seniors as they navigate the college admission process. And I will play a short video. Here is the guidance team at Port St. Lucie High School, who did accept the award virtually, and here is a video from the organization.
Hello, Port St. Lucie High School. My name is Lamar Handfield, and I am the program coordinator for the Florida College Access Network. I manage our College-Riding Florida statewide initiatives, and I am here today to present you virtually with this plaque from the American College Application Campaign. This is for your exemplary work last year during the Apply Yourself Florida Initiative and the programs that you put on with Indian River State College in supporting students in the college process, specifically with applying to college. Only one school per state per year is honored with this. This is the very first award that any school in Florida has received as its program to start of last year, so congratulations on this honor. This is for, again, your exemplary work, being a model for the Apply Yourself Florida Campaign, and also for the timely submission of your data to AFAM. So, again, I just want to virtually present you this award, congratulations, and say thank you for all the great work that you're doing. Thank you. Bye.
All right. So, congratulations to Port St. Lucie High School for really setting a standard there. Next, we want to take a moment to recognize our very own Dr. Kevin Perry. He was recently awarded as the Board Member of the Year for the Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucie County. This is the Bill Blazek Board Member Award, and the reason why he was selected was due to his overall commitment to youth, his help in building relationships and capacity between the clubs and the schools, and the support he provides in collaboration between Boys and Girls Clubs and St. Lucie Public Schools in aligning their programs with ours. So, congratulations to Dr. Kevin Perry, if you will stand to be recognized. And we also have joining us the Executive Director, Will Armstead, is here as well, if you could stand to be recognized, and thank you so much for honoring Kevin Perry. Next, I'd like to invite Dr. Helen Wiles to come to the podium to share with you some more good news.
Thank you, Lydia. Good evening, board members, Madam Chair, Superintendent Gent. I am very pleased to be here once again to recognize some excellent work from the Office of Teaching and Learning, and this time it is for the Strengthening Career in Technical Education grant that we wrote from the Department of Juvenile Justice that is allowing us to expand CTE programs to our PACE Center for Girls. So, it is always a goal to make sure that all of our students are career-ready, and this opportunity allows us to add the Internet Business Associate Industry Certification for those students, and the grant will cover all of the necessary laptops, software, training materials, industry certifications, teacher stipends, as well as a large screen that will allow these students to do virtual CTE field trips and learn about the world of work, so that they are ready upon graduation. So, we're really pleased, and I want to thank three special individuals, our fabulous grant writer, Ms. Jennifer Chevalier, as well as our Director of Career and Technical Education, Alicia Seitz, and our Director of Alternative Education, Sunny Booker, and those three individuals worked collaboratively to make this possible for our students. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And now, we will move to our star awards. We have three individuals to recognize this evening. The first is Brian Whalen. He is a Technology Service Specialist. He was nominated by Ms. Fiore, the Executive Secretary at White City Elementary. She states she is always happy if she gets him on the phone for a Viper ticket. He is knowledgeable, thorough, very patient, and most importantly, he always fixes the problem. While she doesn't have any complaints about anyone else in IT, she feels Brian is a standout as he goes above and beyond to rectify the situation and explains what is going on in a way that people understand who aren't computer wizards. So, congratulations to Brian. And all of our star recipients will receive their award sometime next week from the superintendent. The next nominee is David Godoy. He is a bus driver in the Transportation Department, and he was nominated by a community member, Mrs. Bruinger. She and her son were broken down on the side of the road with their car. Mr. Godoy, the bus driver, noticed they were having a difficult time crossing the road to get to safety. He stopped his bus, got off, and helped them to cross a very busy street, and she was struck by his kindness and wanted him to be recognized for saving their day. So, congratulations to Mr. Godoy. And our final star recipient for this evening is our very own Christine Harrison, Executive Assistant to the Board Members. She was nominated by Mr. Gent. Recently, Ms. Harrison took the time to write two very beautiful resolutions for two board members who were leaving, Ms. Hennessy and Ms. Hilson. The board resolutions were personalized and so well-written, they provided a heartfelt review of their enormous contributions that both have made to the board and the school district. This is a very special talent to be able to write such type of resolutions, and we're so appreciative of the time Ms. Harrison took to write those. So, thank you so much, and congratulations, if you would stand to be recognized since you're here with us. All right, and that is all, and I will let Mr. Gent introduce the next.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I'll have one presentation tonight to the Board. This past last week, the end of the week, we received our official graduation rate from the Department of Education. This is the federal graduation rate. This is what's utilized across the country. It's a, when you want to compare apples to apples, this is what we use, and it's great news for the school district, and I wanted Dr. Prince to come forward at this board meeting and then just present this to the Board. We'll get into more detail in two weeks when we have our board workshop. We've got some other information to share as well, but I thought it would be important at this time to, we've always done it, and I want to make sure that the Board is aware of it and our general public is aware of what the great news is for last year's graduation rate, so Dr. Prince, take it away.
All right. Good evening to the Board and the Superintendent Gent, also Happy New Year. It's always good to get up here and give good news. That's one of the favorite things. It's something I really enjoy doing. So, I want to start a little bit with what our mission statement is, and it's in front of you. The mission of the St. Lucie Public Schools is to ensure all students, and I want to, you know, exemplify all students graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed. So, we've got some great news on that front, and I want to share with you a little bit since the five-and-a-half years that I've been here along with the Superintendent, Mr. Gent, that a lot of the seeds that were planted five-and-a-half years ago have truly borne fruit, especially the seeds that were planted in elementary and middle school, and now we're seeing that fruit born in the high school. So, I want to talk a little bit about two things. One is graduation rate. The second is acceleration. I shared at a board meeting a few, well, it was probably about a month and a half ago with regards to the Equity Report, and really making sure that our advanced placement classes, our college-level courses in high school and middle school, were adequately represented by all groups, and that's something we've really pushed. So, St. Lucie Public Schools, from one year to the next, improved our graduation rate from 90.4% to 93.2%, which was almost a 3% improvement. Our comprehensive high schools are now sitting over 98% for our graduation rate, and that's a four-year federal graduation rate, and that was an increase of 1.5%. Now, if we looked at all of our, well, before I get there, if you look back from 2013 and look at our graduation rate and how far we've come over the last seven years, it's truly a tremendous amount of work with our staffs at our schools and our principals to make sure that our students are being followed up with and supported at each and every school, and that every student is treated individually to make sure that they can perform at the highest level. So, from 2013 to 2020, we've seen a substantial improvement, and not only that, we're in the top 10 in the state for performance, particularly with large districts. We ranked fourth in the state, and the performance of our students, once again, sitting at 93.2%. Across the Treasure Coast, we still rank, you know, right up there. If you combine Indian River and Martin County, they still wouldn't match the number of students that we serve. We're a very large district with a lot of complexity, especially in some of our areas with high poverty, but we make no excuses. Those students are still continuing to perform at high levels, especially if you look at our individual high schools at our, across the Treasure Coast. If you look at the top high schools across the Treasure Coast, number one, for the first time, is not Lincoln Park. It is Treasure Coast High School at 99.6%. I've got a little bit of pressure this year because one of my children attends Treasure Coast High School and is a senior, and I can guarantee the Board tonight that he should graduate, so he'll be one of the six or 700 students in that graduating class that crossed that finish line. But still, very, very impressive when you look across the Treasure Coast at the comprehensive high schools. Some outliers with regards to performance. We rank sixth in performance in ESC graduation rate, but that's significantly higher than the state average, 9% to be exact. We're seventh in Hispanic students graduating, which is 4.5% higher than the state average. Our Black students are ranked 14th with almost a 6% higher than the state average for Black students, and our white graduation rate is in the top half, still higher than the state average for white students. Now, this is the really impressive slide where we talk about closing the gap. We want to make sure that all of our students are treated equitably in our school system. Graduation rate is the number-one indicator of the health of the school district. So, if I look at our graduation rate from 2013, overall, I'm sitting at about 93%. But if I look at our white students, we're sitting at 92%, our Hispanics at 94, and our Black students are at 93%. We have no achievement gap when it comes to graduates in St. Lucie Public Schools, and we're a true outlier when it comes to the performance of our students and our graduates in our district. And once again, the same information is illustrated as a table. All of our groups of students has had substantial improvements, particularly with our Black students, where they've increased their graduation rate by 34%. In 2013, the graduation rate for a Black student in our district was 58%, almost the flip of a coin. I want to take a deep dive at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy because that is a school that's close to our superintendent's heart, is a former principal there, but also, we've put a lot of emphasis and work, and the school has done an outstanding job of improving the performance of the students at that school. So, looking at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy's graduation rate from 2013, for all students, it was literally almost 50%, 55%. Now, that graduation rate for those students is at 96%. If I took a look at the race of those students, if we look at all students once again, they went from 55 to 96%. White students, 73 to 94%. Black students, and I'm going to sit on that one for a minute, 43% of our Black students at Westwood graduated. That number is now 95%. And our Hispanic students went from 45 to 97. I'm sorry, that was Hispanic. Our Black students went from 45 to 97. Some really impressive results, and I can't commend enough the staff, the principals, assistant principals, the teachers, graduation coaches, that really, really work with these kids to make sure they meet all the requirements for graduation. Once again, this table reflects the improvement from 13 to 20, and our Hispanic and Black students are no longer outliers on the wrong way. We've closed that gap to where there is no significant at all difference in the performance of our students at that particular school. Now, specifically with males, our Black and Hispanic males in the state of Florida have lagged significantly behind their white counterparts. If we took a look at Westwood as an example, our white males have gone from 67 to 92%. Interestingly, our Hispanic males have gone from 52 to 91, but look at our Black males have gone from 52% to 97% of our Black students at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy are graduating. We put this slide together for you, Dr. Mills, because if I left it out, you'd say, "What about the girls?" So, I want to make sure that we included that and anticipated that question, but this graph represents the huge improvement we've had specifically with our Black students at Westwood Academy. But this is for girls. Once again, our Black females, their graduation rate in '14 was 59%. It's now 97%. Hispanic, impressively, has gone from 83 to 100% of our Hispanic girls graduated this past year, and for our white students, from 80 to 96%. And you can see the huge improvement that has occurred, and we wanted to highlight Fort Pierce Westwood Academy because they have really, really done a marvelous job and turned that school around. Acceleration, I just wanted to hit just a slide for you because this is in alignment with the Equity Information and kind of the seeds that we plant in middle school to really encourage our students to be workforce-ready or graduate with a high school credit. So, acceleration means that a senior, a graduate, one of our graduating seniors, has passed a dual enrollment class, passed an AP test, an IB test, a Cambridge exam, or passed an industry certification course. Now, these students, remember, finished the year virtually, and they still had to pass a test in one of those areas. They didn't get waived, they had to pass a test. Currently, right now, 93% of our seniors, this class, 2021, is enrolled in an acceleration course. Our students don't have senioritis. We challenge our students, we're going to enroll them in these classes, and if they don't want to take one, we're going to talk them into it. Only 7% of our students are not enrolled in one, and mainly, those students are not taking a class simply because they're credit deficient and have to make up credits and aren't able to take one. But over the last six years or five years, we've seen our acceleration success in high school go from 53 to 71%, which is almost a 20% difference over the last five years. So, that concludes my presentation. It's been just a great opportunity. I want to thank the Board, thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to the Superintendent.
Any questions from the Board?
Yes, Mr. Kelly was asking first, and then Dr. Mills will come to you.
Can I just ask, the 93.2, which is the figure that's out there for everybody, just wanted to clarify, maybe I missed something, or maybe I didn't, 93.2, that's the average for all schools, K through A, high schools, middle schools, all together?
Yes, sir. That's all of our schools, all of our comprehensive and our...
Would you have the number for what is the graduation rate for our high schools only?
98%.
What is it?
98.2%.
Could you say it one more time?
98.2%.
Oh, thank you, okay. I just want to make sure, everybody, you heard that, Mr. Gent?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Tremendous, fabulous.
Thank you.
Dr. Mills?
I think so.
Absolutely.
Well, it's everybody at the school, so thank you.
I am so excited, I am screaming to hear how far we've come. You got the lights on? Please.
Okay. I'm just thrilled to hear the accomplishments that we've made as a district in the past five years. I mean, it's, I always knew we could do it, but when I look at the data here and I see where we come from, you know, 63% graduation in the 50 percentile in Westwood alone, I think about one time when we were in the parade, I think it was the Martin Luther King's Parade, and as we were going by, people were saying, "What about Westwood? You forgot about Westwood. What about Westwood?" And now, I can truly say that Westwood is among the top, like our other schools. I mean, we have done a tremendous job. I cannot thank this district enough. I can't, Superintendent, thank you for your labor, thank you for your work, Deputy Superintendent, Helen Wiles, and all the rest of you. It's incredible what I'm hearing. Sandy Booker, and I can just go on and on and call in people names out, but every last one of you have played a tremendous part in this increase, and I'm just thrilled. I mean, I am so excited here. I might look calm, but I want to do my shout right now. Thank you again for what you've done, and let's continue to even do better.
We will.
Thank you.
You know, my thought too, Dr. Mills, you talk about the excitement within and all, and you gave accolades to administrators and all, but, you know, our students deserve accolades as well because they worked hard, and to know the pride they feel within themselves now and the security they have to go forth and make a great future for themselves, we should be proud of that. We have come a long way. Dr. Mills and Mr. Ingersoll and I were of the day when the rates were very, very low, and that was a point of consternation in our community, as it well should have been. But it's been a lot of hard work, not only through our adults, our staff, our leadership under Superintendent Gent, but our students as well, and I want them to know how proud we are of them, and the empowerment that they must feel just makes my heart sing as
Ms. Richardson?
Hopefully, I'm on, but I'd like to also thank our teachers, you know, that has stepped up to the plate and just gone over and above, especially during this time of COVID, so thank you to our teachers or support staff for just being there for our kids.
It does indeed take a village. We have a strong village in St. Lucie Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. That was fabulous. I'd like to just end now on such a high note.
I can't make a motion, but you are.
Would that be your recommendation? All right. Before we get on to the rest of the business then, is there anyone for an EASL report with us tonight? Thank you. We're glad to see you and welcome you to the podium and wish you a Happy New Year as well.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you all. So, I will try to continue on the positive notes that we've been listening to so far tonight. I just want to touch base on a few COVID-related items. First off, kudos to our district for negotiating a much-needed extension to the expired COVID leave, and while it's not a perfect solution, we'll provide much-needed relief to our members who qualify for it. We've also seen the estimate of funding coming from the federal government, which will be a wonderful resource for our educators and our students to continue the success that we've been hearing about tonight, and we will be very happy to help you all figure out how to spend it in the very best ways. We know that social distancing is continuing to be an ongoing issue, especially now that we are seeing more and more students return to brick-and-mortar, in-person education. It's a real struggle that our educators are facing on a daily basis, but doing what they do are making the very best of what they have available. And we have a feeling of this, I guess, a shared sense of collaboration since our March COVID negotiations have begun, and we want to continue to work on those positive relationships and helping to prioritize educators when it comes to vaccinations for those who want to take advantage of those opportunities. We know that the Florida Association of School Board Superintendents have been behind a push to prioritize educators. We have at a local level as well as our state organization. We don't want to request a mandate requiring educators to be vaccinated, but we do want them as essential workers to be towards the front of those opportunities, and we look forward to continuing our collaboration, not only with COVID, but as we move forward in negotiations across the Board. Thank you.
For added information, the Florida School Board Association of School Board Members has sent a letter as well to the Governor, and we, as a local school board, have done the same thing because we do believe in the advocacy of having our teachers and staff folks have their ability to get the vaccination as soon as possible. So, please know there are a lot of organizations hard at work to get that accomplished for everyone, and thank you for your report. Thank you for being here tonight. Do we have anyone from CWA to share a report with us tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we will then move to our consent agenda. Board members, I would accept a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 5-0. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Before we move to a motion, are there any items board members might wish to have removed for separate discussion or vote? Hearing none, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda items as the recommendation of the superintendent.
I move to accept them.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We then will move to our superintendent and staff reports. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy New Year to everyone. The, I want to just echo when Rebecca was here speaking a few moments ago, and with, and the chair as well. You know, we, we stand really side by side, linked up with our teachers and all of our, and all of our employees. Anyone that comes in direct student contact, contact, really needs to, we're, you know, pushing and asking the governor to, to have them at the highest priority as well, our employees. We think it's important. We know the benefits, there's been the push to get our children back into school, and we know that the economic benefits that plays for parents that are able to go to work, what that means to the community, what that means to the state itself, and, you know, there's a, there's a, our teachers and all of our, our direct staffs have done a remarkable job. I'm going to talk to our principals Thursday about that, and we're going to share with you in two weeks, too, the level of service, of how they viewed the service that we've given them so far. But the front line that's in the school centers, there's really no words to talk about, the pressures that they're under, and the disruptions that come when we have a positive case, or we have to quarantine groups of students, and what that means to a school center. Many of us at the diash right now and in the crowd have experienced that in our own lives, we know what that means, and it really is a disruption to our schools. Anything that we can do to minimize that is important, and I know that this is, you know, uncharted territory, but our teachers are to be commended, our, our employees, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, those that have direct contact with our students have just done an outstanding job, and I know they'll continue to do so. That's built upon a strong foundation and a strong culture that the district has, so I appreciate Rebecca's comments and join her in that. Couple of other things, we sent out, we were approved for the, along these lines, the education plan for FDOE approval for the spring, we were approved on that. We will present in two weeks, again, in a little more detail, the four areas, but that was a big deal, and that happened right the last day before we left for spring break. And so I appreciate Dr. Wild and her shop for pulling that together. We'll focus on the interventions that we're going to be utilizing with the students. We talked about the My School interventions and communications with those students, where we've tried to get them back into, into the school centers, and enhance outreach that goes on with different strategies, and then what's really important is not only, you know, the PD, the professional development for our employees. So we'll present that in a little more detail in two weeks, but that was a big deal that that was approved so quickly by the Department of Education. Also, we're going to be putting in a, we're going to be putting in a request for some dollars, almost over $766,000, which, for an after-school reading program, it's called Gears Funding, and we'll talk in more detail with you at the workshop, but really what we're going to be doing is a, a heavy push for those students that have been underperforming, particularly in all, particularly K through 3, the students that are struggling with the basic foundational skills that you would need. We're going to have a 1 to 6 ratio for the students and the teachers. After school, there's some, there's some parameters and some regulations that have to be built into this, but we're going to be doing a push and reaching out and contacting those parents and those caregivers for the students that we really need to see, even though we're going to have a program this summer as well that we'll share with the board. This is something that would go into effect February 1st until, I believe, April 1st. It would be for, for two months, which would greatly benefit the students with this almost, it's not one-on-one, but it's pretty close to one-on-one contacts, contact with the students. So we'll, we'll be focused on phonics, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, these basic skills that are important. So we'll share more detail with you regarding that, and we anticipate, I don't want to jinx it, but, so, but we're pretty confident we're going to receive that. Also, I appreciate those board members that were able to join us yesterday, that we went out and hit our, we didn't hit them, but we recognized our outstanding first-year teacher finalist, Tyler Evans from Mariposa Elementary, and what was great about that is he was a graduate of Port St. Lucie High School and one of our Promises of Promise students, and he's a music teacher at Mariposa. Alyssa Fairbrother, 4th grade ELA Social Studies at River Z Elementary, she moved here from Colorado, and then Jewel Edwards over at Cast, she is also a Lincoln Park Academy grad and a recipient of the Promises of Promise Award, and what that is, and we're going to begin our push for that as well, is if a student graduates from St. Lucie Public Schools and goes to college to become a teacher, you're guaranteed a job four years later, or five years later if you get a master's, but it's a push, and we get several students each year, applicants that come in, and they're guaranteed a position right here, and so it's neat to see that two of the three finalists that will be recognized will announce the winner at the Night of the Stars virtual program, that they were part of the Promises of Promise program. So again, that was great news. And then speaking of graduations, I believe the board has this on their calendar, if those of you are able to attend, and I see Ms. Booker out there as well, but we'll do our winner graduation on the 8:30 on January 21st, that'll be over at Central's Gymnasium. We'll be following all the social distancing and safety guidelines, not, they're just a small amount of students, probably just a handful, approximately 20, 25, and we'll be in the auditorium, and we want to make sure that we honor these students who, who graduated outside of May or after, at the end of the summer, and this will also include any early graduates that would have graduated just a couple of weeks ago at the semester break. Thank you. That completes my remarks for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And as required now, I will read into the minutes for a motion. There is a motion confirming, approving, and ratifying all of the superintendent's actions taken during the COVID-19 public health emergency for the period covered by his report, and authorizing the superintendent's continuation of such actions for so long as the governor's emergency declaration remains in effect. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Mr. Harold, do you have a report for us this evening?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you, and Happy New Year to you, too. We'll move then to our school board member reports, and we will go to Mr. Ingersoll first.
Well, thank you, Ms. Holling, I wish I could be with you, but unfortunately I'm stuck at home. I first want to thank, thank our school district for the graduation rates, particularly our students, our parents and grandparents for making sure our children get the education and supporting them in other means. Also want to thank the union and the district for working on COVID leave. I was not attending, but I was having a team meeting at Labor Park Elementary, and there was a couple of professionals that were concerned about the COVID leave, and it was great to see the very next day that the district and the union came to compromise and they worked that out, and you don't know the stress that people are under during this pandemic sometimes, and it doesn't, it takes a toll, not only in the classroom, but in the family life too, so I really do appreciate everyone working out, working that out together. It's great to see all the Christmas time of schools, becoming nervous and reaching out to children through social media and through different means, and it was great to see, great to see the principals and the teachers reading, and it, it just shows, Mr. Jen, that our district is going in the right direction, and I also want to thank you for your leadership and for your cabinet and the teachers out there that are working so far. I feel that our district is going in the right direction, and I know this year has been different, but I think it's still going to be exciting to see how we turn out. Thank you, Ms. Holling.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, and take care.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear him, he needs a better, he needs a better microphone. I'm sorry, Troy, I just-
Dr. Mills?
Jack, I do want to apologize, I cannot see myself wearing a certain tie at home, so I went casual today, Jack, just for you. I thought you'd do the same thing.
Again, I couldn't hear him, so.
Dr. Mills?
Welcome back to the school, all of our school administration, as well as our staff, all throughout our school, our bus drivers, our janitors, our IT department, just welcome back everyone back into St. Lucie County Public Schools to finish this new year out. You've done a tremendous job with, as we've heard over and over, with the COVID, it has been such a challenge, and I understand that, in every department, and so we congratulate you on your great accomplishments and what you're doing to make our schools great here, and our students, because it's all about our students, and yeah, I know our students worked real hard, but I know that it takes caring adults to get the attention of our students so that many of them will work hard, so we do appreciate your labor. We do have an announcement as far as to the parents, we have dates still to apply for the high school attractor program. We've already had a certain amount of time that we've, part one, I guess, and now we're in part two section of children who are interested in getting into one of our attractor programs. I believe that our presentation spoke of how many seniors are in a program now, you know, a very high percentage, I believe was in the 90 percentile. So we have all type of skills and classes and careers and certifications that parent, you can look on our website and look up our tractor programs, and maybe your student would like to take part in one of those programs. So those dates to, to sign up will be January the 18th through February the 5th, and this is round two, we're calling it round two. So please look on the website for more information, I'm sure the information is on our school website, as to those programs that we do offer. Many of our people in the community do not realize the tremendous career and technical programs that we have out there with so many certifications, so look it up and see if it's something that you would like or your student would like to participate in. Again, I want to congratulate the tremendous graduation rate in our presentation to go from 68% in 2013, and here's 2020, five years later, we're at 93 percentile. It is something for us to celebrate, and let's do just that, let's celebrate it. Now, on February the 6th, the Education Foundation will be having their Night of the Stars, and it's going to be done differently. We're not going to meet together as we normally do, but instead it will be done virtually, it will be done on our school television, and it will be covered that way, but we are going to acknowledge those teachers, first-year teachers, minority-year teachers, principals, I believe this time is going to be in part of the program, it should be very exciting. So please remember February the 6th, you will probably be able to get, I don't know at what time, but we'll keep you updated on that so that everybody can enjoy the Night of the Stars.
That's it. Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Kelly?
Want to make sure Troy can hear me, okay. Yesterday, we, we went out to a few schools, and I guess the, we, the first one we went to was Mariposa, I guess Mrs. Holling and Mrs. Richardson were there with the superintendent and some of the staff, and that was for the first-year award, first-year-
Outstanding teacher.
Teachers, and I think the young man was named Kyle, and you asked the Mr. Jen, you said, ask him where he was from, and he, he's homegrown, he's from Port St. Lucie, he was born here, and he went to Port St. Lucie High School, and now he's teaching here, and that warms my heart. And that goes along with what I'm going to say about Mr. Perry, he's, I think he's left already, and, and I think, yes, he has, and Mr. Perry, in the Boys and Girls Club, I've been with this Boys and Girls Club for the 25 years, everyone knows, for quite a long time. Mr. Perry is what we call a club kid, like me, I'm a club kid. He grew up in a Boys and Girls Club, wherever he originally was from, he spent a lot of time as a youngster, he learned to do everything in a Boys and Girls Club, as I did, so when we got here and we started this Boys and Girls Club, but Mr. Hill is the one that got me involved, he got a lot of people involved, that guy, but he was in my Lions Club, and we're giving back. Mr. Perry is giving back, Kyle at Mariposa is giving back, and with that, I, I think you said, Mr. Prince, Mr. Jen, it's 98% graduation rate for our high schools, was that it?
Six traditional schools, right?
For our six comprehensive high schools, yes, it's at 90, 98, right?
98.
98 with our six comprehensive high schools.
Yeah, 98, yeah. Anyhow, I think everybody got that. I, I hope that those kids come back and stay in St. Lucie County, because it's the greatest county in the state of Florida by far, and it just gets better all the time. Mrs. Mills, you alluded, Dr. Mills, you alluded to how much better, everything has been getting better, we'll talk about that some other time, but Mrs. Richardson, you alluded to the, you know, we have, what a great staff we have, and we do, and, and I think Mr. Jen already alluded to, we do have a great staff, and I started mingling with the staff, I haven't been here many years like you, maybe seven, eight months ago, when I decided to run for this office, and it is a great staff, we're, we're very lucky. And I want to say, though, like you said, Mrs. Richardson, the teachers are the ones that are on the front line, the teachers are out there, they're on the front line, and they are essential workers, and I'll get to my point, they're essential workers and they should be covered, they should be able to get their vaccinations just as quickly as anyone over 65 or our other essential workers, our police departments and our firefighters, all the essential workers, but they've got to be considered essential workers, and I know that we did send a letter requesting that, did we get any response? Should we send another letter? That's what I'm asking, and we need to, we made, the teachers are our front line, and they're the ones that helped us get to 98%. Is 98% the correct figure for, that's for Port St. Lucie High School graduation, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, 98%. Anything else we can do to further along than getting in the, getting in that, top of getting vaccinations, like all essential workers?
Yeah, we've sent, there's, there's been a, there's been a push from really across the state and districts everywhere, and, and they are aware of that. Hopefully with the release of more vaccines that are coming down, and we're hearing that that's there, that it'll happen sooner than later, but the, the push is still there and will remain.
Thank you, teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you. So I didn't want to forget anything, so I wrote what I wanted to say. I would like to just start by wishing everybody a safe, healthy, and blessed new year. 2020 was a year like none other. I've never seen anything like this in my lifetime. I still am trying to wrap my mind around the events of last year. With that being said, our teachers and support staff deserve a huge thank you, truly for being our frontline heroes, for stepping up to the plate amidst lots of unknowns during this pandemic, to be there for our students, our parents, and for continuing to do so now. So thank you, teachers, support staff, every, every administrators, we see you and all that you do, and from the bottom of my heart, we truly appreciate you. I believe the word for 2021 is change. 2020 has taught us to work and think outside the box, outside the norm. In an effort to embrace change, I would like to encourage our community to come out to our board meetings. Let your voice be heard, let your presence be felt, when it's safe for us to do so. Let's continue to do our part to say stay, stay safe and keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Can I add just one thing that I forgot?
Sure.
The reason, I don't mean to be redundant, I guess I do mean to be redundant, but that 98% graduation rate, I come from a state, state of Connecticut, have the highest-paid teachers in the United States, has great schools, the, one of the best school systems, Yale University, I can go on and on, wonderful state for education, also the highest taxes in the United States, so you get what you pay for maybe, but I never, in all my years, going to school- city, anywhere, because it's done differently up there, they are boards of education, ever announce a ninety-eight percent high school graduation rate. So I am over the top about it, like you are, Dr. Mills. I am. So I won't say it again. I won't say ninety-eight percent again. That's it. But I'm very, very proud, Mr. Gent, staff, teachers. I echo you, what you say. It's, it's a tremendous feat. And like I say, never saw anything like that. Coming from Connecticut, this is better. This is better. Thanks again.
Thank you again, Mr. Kelly. Just a couple of items to add, and I want to stress again that, as Mr. Gent said, statewide, all of the school board associations and members are advocating to get our teachers to be able to receive the vaccine. It is a continual effort. You mentioned what can we do? Well, it's a daily effort on behalf of the School Board Association and the advocacy committee that works with them to make that happen. We not only send letters to Governor DeSantis, but to the Department of Education as well, all of the areas where we feel and hope that our message will be heard. The Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments meeting was held a couple of weeks ago. The, the main topic of discussion there was the CARES Act funding and how our multi-county areas can work together to better serve the needs of our counties. We're four very distinct counties, but bottom line on all of them is that we all have people that are hurting and people that are in need. So the mission was reemphasized at that meeting that we will continue, as a four-county area, to continue to work together and collaborate and serve the needs of our residents in the best way possible. And board members, the final thing I have is each of you received it back in the beginning of December from the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards, the legislative priority list that was developed through the counties that are participating in that. In order for it to move forward, I do need consensus from you all tonight that you support that platform, and we will move forward as a county to let them know that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Dr. Mills? All right, Mr. Ingersoll, I'm presuming you are on board with it as well, so I'll assume we have consensus and let the consortium know that St. Lucie County is a yes. Okay, I think that is it. It was a longer board meeting, but really a joyous one. You can feel the excitement up here, and it's, it's just nice to be part of that and to know that we are serving our county in such tremendous ways. So, and those of you in the audience tonight, thank you. By being here, you're showing your support for St. Lucie Public Schools. You're showing your advocacy, and even with staff, you know, it requires staying extra and staying longer, but all of you have it in your heart to be the greatest advocate for St. Lucie Public Schools that there is. So thank you from all of us.